It's exciting and then it's like.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Agenda Review Meeting. At this time, Ms. Fisher, call the roll.
Council President Wilpersen.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lamden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have no boards and commissioners interviews today, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, a couple of items for the final agenda for tonight, October 6th. First up, we have Kevin Freibot to brief Resolution 2025-0076.
It's fun to walk all the way down here and say, "I don't have any updates for you." So this is just, this is that proposal on Monroe for TIF funding. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, I just had a question. Can you clarify if this project went, did anything extra than what's required of development standards of sidewalks, I guess?
I don't know for, I don't know either way, sorry.
Looks like Spencer's coming in to jump in.
Spencer might have more info than I do on that.
Yeah, I know you and I had had a discussion briefly earlier. I did check in with current planning, and they indicated there wasn't anything above and beyond what our standards already require.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Some of your best work, Kevin. All right, next up, is it Libby or Marlene or both? We're going to brief Resolution 2025-0082.
I've got to start, but depending on the questions, we have Marlene up here also. So tonight, we have for consideration and hearing a resolution to adopt the developer agreement with the lower terrace lift station. I want to thank everybody for their patience. The reason we did a substitution today was to substitute a clean version of the agreement. And the only difference between the last version that I briefed, which was last week? Week before? Is that Attachment A, is the legal description, is accurate and cleaned up, and we've added the file number for the planning department. And that's it. It's the same agreement you've seen for the last couple of months. Remember, this is a contract with the developer to build a sewer pump lift station out in the lower terrace area. It's an area that we've identified as needing a regional lift station since about 2007. It'll be serving development in that corner of the city. For not to exceed amount of $8 million, there's an interest repayment over eight years of 4.75. We talked about that last time. Looking at different options to, you know, pay that off earlier, no penalty for that. Any questions?
I just think I just had received some comments about, is this like the door to urban sprawl? Like, did it go through the planning commission? Just clarity, because it's so far up there. Would that be serving people outside of the city limits, but still in the UGA, Marlene?
Right. So it's a little both. It could serve inside and outside the city limits. All inside the UGA, this is not making a land use decision of any kind, so we're not, we're not dealing with anything related to Title 17 in the municipal code. And we aren't making land use decisions. So this sewer service can only serve properties that are properly platted. So if there's something that wasn't platted, they would have to go through that process. And if they, so only properties within the UGA can have final plats. And so it's, this is all, this is not a land use decision. This is an infrastructure decision. So we're, and we also have a number of smaller, older, private pump stations that we then had to take on and are now managing and maintaining, put in for little developments. So ultimately, we'd like to bring all those together into a regional system. It'd be less expensive, less maintenance, and more appropriately managed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Bingle, then Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, and would you just, so in 2007, it was identified that we need a regional pump station there. Could you just tell, because we did a study back then. Would you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so in 2007, we did what's called the Lower Terrace Wastewater Study, and it concluded the best way to serve this area was to build a regional lift station rather than a bunch of disparate pieces of infrastructure. It was a need then and has been something that we've been trying to get toward for the last nearly 20 years. And so this is an opportunity, working with this developer, to get this infrastructure finally constructed.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, so I understand this is just about the water service, I guess, then it's not about land use. How would the city have influence over, I guess, non-city boundaries of how they change their land use if this serves outside of our city boundary? So it'd be our water district, but like the county changes.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we can't use water and sewer service to manage growth for other jurisdictions. So they set their own rules and their own development standards. And the city is a regional purveyor and is expected to provide service within our sewer and water service areas.
So Marlene, I'll ask you, you kept using the word, the study was regional. So regional as in the city of Spokane. Regional, how are you, how was regional defined in the study?
The study determined we needed a regional station, which means just a station that would serve more than a single development's needs. So the idea being that, rather than having lots of small, little stations that become very expensive over time, it made sense to consolidate that infrastructure into a station that served more properties than one development.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Klitsky, then Councilmember Bingle.
So this facility can't serve outside of the UGA. Is that correct?
We can't provide sewer service outside the UGA. That's a state law limitation.
Yeah, I mean, do you just want to talk about our responsibility as the water provider in the area?
So there's two different things, water service and wastewater service. So this, we're talking about wastewater here, right? So water service has different roles than wastewater. Wastewater service has to be inside the UGA, just like our solid waste, for example, has to be within the city limits. So we have different boundaries for different utility needs. So water has some legacy locations outside the UGA, but that does not exist in the wastewater world. So wastewater is within the UGA.
And just along those lines, what is our responsibility to serve those areas?
Well, they're in our, they're in our sewer service area, so they're anticipated areas that we would serve over time, right? So we don't get to every area with every year. Obviously, this has been 20 years in the making, but something that we've looked at to expand.
Any other questions? Thank you, Marlene. Thank you.
All right, moving now to the draft agenda for October 20. I'm going to have Matt come down first. He has five or six items to brief. We will start with Ordinance C36767. That's the Golf Series 2018 SLP.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Yeah, so this one is part of the maturities that were coming to be due at the end of this year. Golf and Parks actually, in its entirety, decided to pay this debt off and then refinance the other one that we'll talk about shortly. About a $1.6 million principal balance that's left, they're paying that out of their golf fund. Last I looked, there was about $7.5 million in fund balance for them to pay this off. Questions?
Got it.
Okay. Go to Ordinance 36764, the issuance of the LTGO refund, refunding bond. The refund of the 2022, or 2020 LTGO bonds that was originally issued from funding improvements for the riverfront park gondola, skyride, and public improvement with Iron Bridge increment. This is just talking about that with the $340,000 that is due. And just talking about this being a separate one, because it was an LTGO bond that was voter approved originally. The resolution, well, Resolutions 2025-0086 and 0087, this is for the administrative, administrative kind of cleanup in all the rules, as well as the change to the policy, the investment policy that allows us to increase the ability to give loans to ourselves or other outside agencies from 15% of our net cash balance to 20%. Any questions on that one?
So Matt, just out of curiosity, are there any other municipalities that exceed 15%?
I've, I've tried to find a handful of them. I believe the county that I saw, county across the street, does, does a similar program as well. I believe their range is 10 to 30%. I'm digging into that, because there was a question that did come up. The reason that we use this one specifically is because it is a useful tool, because the charter, the charter, I think it's Section 85, that precludes us from issuing LTGO bond. That was a charter amendment back in 2008, 2009, response to the riverfront park, riverfront parking debt that was due, precluded us to issue councilmatic bonds. And so that is why we use this. But it's not unique in its use. Our neighbors across the river use this, and that's how they fund the airport, the airport construction. And that's what they're, I believe, using to fund for some of Shrek's capital improvements as well. So it's a common use.
Any other questions from, for that? Councilmember Cathcart?
Just wondering, what are the risks of increasing this? As I know, like, City Seattle, for example, is 15. So why, why are they at 15 and not 20 or something higher?
Yeah. Well, first and foremost, they do not have that charter restriction that we have. We are the, our bond council has never seen a charter restriction like that. And so it's, it's something that we're a little handcuffed to not do that tax, that tax-free councilmatic bond issuance. But the risk, I would say, is overextending yourself to a debt that you, you're worried can't be paid. But when we're, when we're doing this, obviously, we're doing this with ourselves primarily. I mean, there's some that are outside agencies. But when we're doing that, we are, we are obviously planning both the due from and the due to.
But the, okay, one more follow-up.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
But the due to, I guess, in terms of timing, usually, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, it results in that big balloon payment. So we sort of know upfront that we can't actually afford to pay it off. And so I'm just curious, from a planning perspective, how does that sort of fit in?
Well, so the balloon payment is, is something that we just do, because it has to be in five-year increments. But you can, you can map it out so that it is in a 15-year, and this is, this is what we've done historically for many, many years, is, is saying, okay, it's going to be 15 years theoretically, right? And based on that, we break that into five-year increments, and that would be what the first five years of that 15-year payment would be. And then here's the balloon payment for 10 years. And then at year five, we obviously refinance that 10-year balloon out next. I mean, that's, as we'll talk about this in the, in the refunds that we're doing, I mean, these are for large capital projects, obviously. This is, you know, West Plains Fire Station. This is the CHAZ Dental Clinic. I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but I mean, we can go through those and what those are. I mean, Esmeralda Golf Course. These are, these are capital additions and capital assets that have a much longer useful life than the traditional five-year useful life or tax useful life. We generally tend not to go past seven for, like, vehicles, even though oftentimes, they have a useful life, especially within municipal government, of 10-plus years. We try to keep ourselves pretty close to the five-to-seven-year timeframe, just like the feds do.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I agree with you on Section 85. And, you know, I've talked to Tanya and our bond council on this quite a bit. And why don't we just make a charter amendment, go, you know, pitch it to the voters and tell them, you know, this is the sort of thing that holds us back as a city from being able to build the infrastructure, for example, in Latah or in Indian Trail or in any of the spaces where we have these big infrastructure needs. Why don't we just take that approach and then, you know, that sort of fixes it as well?
I mean, I think that that's up to the policymakers. I think, you know, if that's something that is of interest of you, I think that that's obviously completely within your purview to go down that path, within the ability to what I'm do, what I'm able to do. These are the tools that I have at my disposal.
Yeah. And I would say that we are precluded from councilmanically issuing those bonds, but that doesn't mean we can't go out to a vote with that as well, because the voters can approve those bonds anytime they want. But just for context, so people know, we can approve councilmanically by state law up to 1.5% of our total assessed value without a vote of the people, if our charter provision were not there, right? And then up to 2.5% with voter approval. We're talking like, seriously, three-quarters of a billion dollars of capacity that we don't, we can't tap into. And I don't know if people know that, but that's the kind of stuff that we could sell those bonds and fix those areas without having to establish a TIF, without having to go through any of that. We can, we can do that, if this were gone.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, you hit the nail on the head. It's, it's a tool in the toolkit that a lot of municipal governments are able to use. But education of that campaign is a difficult one to kind of get across the finish line. And I think that that's got to be the key component, if, if that's something that is of interest to the council. It's, it has to be educating on, on what that tool is and how it's used.
I'll say, it's of interest to me. I'll say at least that much.
Great.
Okay. So Matt, I have one more. So when, how do we select the 50 basis point illiquidity? Could that be adjusted? Are we just at that number? Could it be higher?
You certainly, I think, could make it higher. You generally, I believe it's in the investment policy itself that says it has to be a like rate, a like funded rate of going out for commercial. Obviously, that's a bit lower. And then again, I mean, this is an investment policy, but we are loaning to ourselves. So it's, it's something that we are, we are wanting to make sure that we are paying back to ourselves with a reasonable rate, so that it's actually of benefit, not only to us as an organization, but to the citizens, that they're not overpaying for any sort of debt service.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Matt on this one? All right.
Okay, so the, the last resolution is Resolution 2025-0088, and this is for the refinancing of those, of those balloon payments that we were talking about earlier. There is a handful of them, but just going over them pretty quickly. The Esmeralda Golf Course improvements, the Gardner property, which was for, which was for Police Department Investigative Services, the Alki property, which was for the Police Department Evidence Room, the West Plains Fire Station cost of construction, the CHAZ East Central Dental Clinic acquisition, construction and installation, and then the Division Corridor and University District revitalization area. Those are going to be the ones that are refinanced in totality, in totality goes to $6.661 million, extending those maturities out. Questions?
Seeing none.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next, we'll go to Mr. Eric Paulson for Resolution 2025-0083.
Good afternoon, council. Before you, you have proposed updates to the city's federal agenda. The last time we updated the federal agenda was in the spring of last year. Not much has happened since then, but we thought we'd make changes. That was a har-har moment, so sorry about that. The city's goals are largely the same. However, given all the changes in the federal political environment, these proposals, these proposed changes focus on cuts to vital programs like Medicaid and SNAP food assistance, rescinded grants that impact our city and region, like emergency preparedness, the Spokane Aerospace Tech Hub, and we call out the urgent need for funding for fentanyl response, the mental health crisis. We also added an item after this was briefed at Finance Committee to look at potential federal solutions to the waste energy problem that our city and our ratepayers face. And, yeah, just on a personal note, since our legislative program was formally created in 2019, we have strived for a unified agenda between the administration and the council. We've made a lot of progress there. I thought it was really significant that the mayor asked to present this at Finance Committee, and so that, that felt like a breakthrough to me. We have a citywide unified agenda. I think you can feel good about, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, and I'm hearing what you're, how you're describing it, Eric, but, but that's not actually how it's written. And so I'm just curious, I mean, it is so broad that I could see directives given to our lobbyists to push on a whole host of things from, you know, one, one end to the other end, all under, and I'll just read them. Protect civil rights and programs essential to the most vulnerable. Improve public safety and access to care. Grow the regional economy and strengthen local workforce. Invest in critical infrastructure. All great. I don't disagree with those, but I can see where, within those, we could do a whole host of things, either not contemplated by council, or perhaps trying to avoid the public scrutiny that would come with saying those things at council. And I'm just a little, little concerned about that. And I'm just curious what your, your perspectives are on, on how it's written.
Well, I think, thank you for the question. I think the aim of the document itself is more to provide a lot of flexibility for you, the policymaker, for the administration, to, you know, call out issues that are priorities for you. You know, it's a little bit of a long laundry list, broken into four buckets. And I think the feeling of the staff for both the mayor and your council, as well as lobbyists, was give you, give you a palette of important pressing issues that you can talk about with the community. So I don't know if any council members want to respond.
If I could just follow up then, from a process, would it be the Ledge Committee then that identifies within those what we're going to focus on? Or how, what's the process on that?
Yeah, typically, our Ledge team vets, you know, will drill down into specific aspects of this agenda, make recommendations to full council. We consult with the mayor and the, our federal lobbyists frequently. So, I mean, there's, there's kind of not a, you know, perfect rulebook, but again, we, we offer this language as a way to stay flexible so that you can fight for what's important to you.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, I think that some of those items that you named off are often more of like the broader kind of value statements. But when we talk about, you know, capital investments, there are specifics on there. For example, the Latah Bridge, which is at earmark.
Not on the resolution that I have.
We can make sure that you have the more detailed copy. It should be in the packet. But yeah, those are itemized with, which I believe is the $63, $65 million ask. But I think to, to just sort of process how it's balanced, oftentimes, we would have like the federal lobbyists joining the Legislative Committee for either like a portion of it. So to kind of kick it off, I think altogether, those typically last about an hour. And then we have the Brian Christensen on for maybe, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes. So it's kind of as, as needed, as available. I mean, these things are always ongoing, but we can make sure that also some of the more detailed asks are in there as well.
Councilmember Lamden.
I think this is something we've been talking about the last couple of weeks. It seems like more and more, but just knowing that a lot of issues facing the city of Spokane are also regional issues, I'm curious if there's been any collaboration or conversation with the county in terms of coming up with some shared legislative priorities.
That is our, always our aim. And we also, you know, we have a number of stakeholders that are sort of closely consulted during this process, like the, you know, the National Organization of Cities and mayors. Even a lot of our state partners have similar federal interests. So we really try to take in a lot of information before we provide these recommendations to the policymakers. But, yeah. Good point. Whenever we can find synergy with the county, I think everybody on council and the mayor's staff strives for that. And there is some great overlap. Things like PFAS, for example, that's in the documents. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, and when it comes to the, the process itself, because once, you know, session gets going in Olympia, I mean, we're meeting every week, and it gets, it gets pretty dynamic in there. And things will come to us. Our, our state lobbyists will say, hey, here's an issue that's coming up. How does the city of Spokane feel? The process there, outside of the things that we vote on together, the things that we watch or the things that we're doing, that is really determined by the committee, right?
Sometimes, sure, yeah.
Well, I think most of the time, once it gets moving, right, these like, these priorities, we sort of say, yes, we're all on board with that. We vote on that. But then it'll be like, hey, here's a bill that comes up. And then it's really determined mostly by the committee. And that committee is a three-member body of me, Councilmember Dillon, and Councilmembers Zepone. And so then, when it comes down to, like, if there's something that the entire council wants, we don't necessarily chat with the entire council. We just say, yes, go ahead and watch that.
Yeah. And, Council President, I could speak to that.
Councilmember Zepone?
I don't know what the question is.
Yeah, structurally, that is also similar to like how other organizations like AWC works. They have an executive committee that weighs in quickly on legislation. And then the committee, if it feels like it needs more... And then the committee, if it feels like it needs more advisement from the whole, brings it up to the whole at the times that are appropriate. But for council to take action, it takes like a month for that, and often legislation needs something faster. So I would say like the accountability to the whole kind of question is like, is the committee making bad recommendations that the rest of the council does not like? That's the time that I'd recommend to check in or replace committee members.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why the clarification was necessary, I was just educating on the process and how it happens, but.
Well, I think some people that don't know are confused about it.
Well, that's why I was trying to tell us what the process was, because somebody asked, what is the process? And so I was trying to answer the process question there. So that's what happens, because it gets dynamic, it gets quick, sometimes bills are introduced and passed pretty quickly.
Hey, Councilmember McCattart.
Yeah, and we've certainly debated this process quite a lot in my six years on this council, much because I bring it up. But I also think that there's an opportunity, and we're talking about rules here coming up, to look at our rules and find a way to make sure that there's a placeholder or something for these sorts of items. Now, it, you know, might not be the perfect process, but at least there would be an opportunity for council buy-in a little more frequently as needed. And I'm not saying every single thing, but I think there's sort of this tier that's more so than what we've looked at in the past of what our priorities are that do come to council. I think there's a way to do that and to react quickly when we need to, but we just need to figure out what that looks like within the framework of our rules, I think.
And Councilmember McCattart, and other organizations like AWC, we have a strong support where we take the lead on something, then we support, and then we just monitor. So there are three different levels. I will ask Eric, are there partnerships with the other organizations, say like SNAP? Because I know SNAP has lobbyists. Do we partner with them in letters of support or those other entities that are being impacted by these federal situations?
Very frequently, yeah. They're reaching out to us, asking us to sign on to their materials. We're doing that for them. I mean, it's a very iterative, year-round process, not a one and done. We adopt the agenda, and then we, you know, think about it again next year. So it's very dynamic, and I think that's, you know, that's the rewarding part of this work for all of you and your staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Anywhere, Councilmember McCattart?
Yeah, just really quick. So Paul showed me the addendum that I missed, and so I just want to clarify that you're right, there is a lot more context, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Scott.
All right, thank you. Next up, Councilmember Oppone to brief Resolution 2025-0084.
Yeah, this is the resolution that came to committee that's to provide the Transportation Commission some direction on traffic calming, safe streets projects for 2026 and 2027. The only changes that were made were clarification that staff requested. There's no substantial changes, so basically, there's more, therefore be it resolved, that just specifically says how much from 2026 would go to permanent projects, how much would go to adaptive, same with 2027, how much was permanent, how much is adaptive. And of those permanent, how much of that would go to 27 by 27 projects? So it's a little clearer, but the general idea didn't change.
Councilmember McCattart.
Yeah, I mean, and I've said this again, I'll just reiterate, I mean, I think we need to know, though, like, what are those sidebars for when a project will be permanent versus, you know, temporary or adaptive? And that would help me to better understand what the allocation could or should be within that. So I don't know, I just, I haven't seen any sort of details from the Transpo Commission on what they would like that to look like.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Yeah, I don't think they're there yet. I think that's something that they're still working on, would be kind of creating guidelines like this. For the timeline of construction, they're requesting kind of the dollar amount so that they know, because they're going to make a recommendation for us on final projects. And then council would, we get the final approval on those projects or not. So this is not approving the projects at this point or what the designs would be. So if they say, here's the adaptive recommendation and the permanent recommendation, you're like, I don't think that should be adaptive, I think that should be permanent. There's, that time is still to come for us.
Go ahead, Councilmember McCattart.
Real quick then, I mean, I would just ask our staff to try to be as proactive in bringing those forward as early as they can, because my experience is when they come to us, they're baked. And there's a lot of time that would go into changing something from adaptive to permanent or vice versa, I would imagine. And so come to us before they're baked, so we can have that discussion, and then they can kind of proceed with putting those projects together.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Oppone?
I'm gonna probably channel my inner Abby here, but she would say, you're all welcome to come to the Transportation Commission meetings, and you are all members of the Transportation Commission, so just encouraging that for all of you.
Councilmember McCattart.
I've never had to attend the Plan Commission to get a point across, and it should not have to be that I have to attend a Transpo Commission meeting to have input into the process.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we have Eldon Brown to brief Resolution 2025-0085.
Good afternoon. Be the other map there, Terry. The one from bridge to Lindy Key. Yeah, that one. We talked about this potential street or alley vacation back in the Urban Experience Committee meeting in September 8th. What the developer would like to do is take the red crosshatched area of that alley, this is the northwest part of town, and just on the northwest end, Kendall Yards, he would like to actually vacate the red crosshatched area to consolidate that with other properties in there to do a plat, to develop some single-family lots after he vacates that. Now, we did have a petition on that fish hook there that the property owner on the south side in there is not necessarily in favor of this project. And so the developer on the, kind of the north and west side of the crosshatched area has basically 66 and 2/3% ownership, and the people on the southeast side have 33 and 1/3% ownership, was just basically the minimum amount that we can actually accept to proceed with the vacation. It requires 66 and 2/3% to start a petition, so they got basically just meet that criteria almost on the dot. You can kind of see the people on the south side next to the red crosshatched area are losing a lot of backyard access in that if they vacate that, that they have just a very little property left in the green there. You can see that property line on, right below the edge of the green, there just isn't much alley left for them for access, and so they're not happy with this potential vacation. The purple area going to the north is where they would like to reroute the alley, get rid of the fish hook, actually reroute to the north to maintain connectivity. But like I say, that's not serving the property on the south side in the fish hook very well, and they're just not happy with this thing at this point in time. They've sent a letter, I think that's in our file, that's not yet been signed, but most of the property owners that are right along the green portion there that's going to remain dedicated right away are not really happy with this proposal at all, they just think there's going to be additional traffic in that alley that's not there today. So we've just got competing interests going on in this one.
Councilmember McCattart.
Yeah, could you remind me, is this the one where there's that, somebody's illegally blocked?
Yes.
And we have not done anything about it?
Right, the one at Lindy Key there, right at the start of the green, has a gate on it, which was put up in there. Like I mentioned previously, we typically just don't go out there and police those unless somebody really complains to us about something. And if they have, if they do, we'd certainly go out there and actually have people take that down. So far, we haven't had any complaints about it, so we haven't actively pursued that.
Eldon, I was gonna remind me, are there any infrastructure changes that need to be taken place with this vacation?
Basically, there's, we're in that alley, that, in that crosshatched area, that will have to be relocated, so that piece would have to take place. Then they would dedicate the area in purple, which is a little wider than the area in red that they're vacating. They would like to dedicate a 22-foot wide strip in there, and what they're actually vacating is 16 feet wide as an alley. And if we were, if this actually gets approved, why, we would take the dedication versus the vacation, swap out the dollars on there, and I think it comes out to be about a $10,000 bill that they would end up owing if we proceeded with a vacation and dedication when you swap the costs back and forth. But those are the primary elements of what's taking place here.
Any other questions for Eldon? So the 66% people, is that, I'm sorry, was that one person or two people?
That's one person.
That's one person versus the 33?
And the 33 is one person also.
All right, thank you, Eldon.
There are some other properties along the green area there. Like I say, they're not actually signed in the petition, but they're part of the process affected by it. They're, will likely see a signed letter that comes through prior to the hearing that would actually express their concerns.
Thank you. Any more questions for Eldon? Always glad to see ya.
Thanks, Eldon. Next up, Chris Averitt to come down and talk about two items, the appointment of Trace Bradburn, and then also ordinance C36766 relating to solid waste SMC sectors.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. The first resolution seeks to appoint Trace Bradburn to the position of Director of Solid Waste. Trace comes to us with experience in both the public and private solid waste sectors in the state of Washington and feel it'd be a good fit for the position. So happy to answer any questions? All right. The next one is updating SMC as it relates to fees for special waste received at the waste energy. Typically, this waste comes in and needs operator assistance, unloading, and so the labor rates haven't been updated in the last several years, so this seeks to recover our labor costs associated with those tasks, so.
So is there a CPI attached to that increase, or is it just flat?
It's based off of our labor rates, our contracted labor rates with the labor union.
For a period of time, it'll come back?
Yep, yeah, we'll update it again when we do 2027 rates.
Any other questions for Chris? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right, next, we have Adam McDaniel to brief three things. The ordinance C36732, ordinance C36733, and C36753.
So the first one is C36753, and this is the one that, it's very large ordinance that just renames the former Building Services Department that was changed to Development Services Department back in 2014. They didn't make all the changes necessary throughout the code that corrects this. Any questions on that one? The second one, I think, is the permit fee deferral program that we brought forward that was amended by council. That simply, we have some affordable housing programs that sort of allow some building permit fees to be deferred upfront and then paid on the back end. Any questions on that one?
Any questions for Adam? All right, seeing none, thank you. On to the next.
Oh, wait, one more, the Hart Ordinance. That was the one that council amended, I think, last week or the week before. Any questions on that one? All right.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I, there's one item that I forgot to flag for Jacoby, and I'm just wondering, because Marlene is here, and she might be able to address it. It's OPR 2023-1224. And just, if we could throw it on the list, I'd.
All right, is she still in the room?
Water, Water Department Construction. And if not, we can chat more offline, but. Sure.
All right, while Marlene's doing that, let's go to Tim Zambelin to talk about ordinance C36751.
Good afternoon. This is Marathon Pipeline franchise. It is coming back before you after being published for consecutive weeks in a row pursuant to Section 100 of the city charter. So it's ready to move on for its final reading. Had no comments on the publication. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are we jumping to Marlene now? Go ahead.
So I think I'll have to give you a few more details, but we have been working sort of through, you know, building by building out there at the Water Department, just really kind of getting started. We're working on an update to the meter shop right now, and so this appears to be more updates to the engineering and design work there. So what we're trying to do is economically update those old buildings on that Water Department site to make them better for the employees. We really were inspired when a building out there that had been renovated, when we turned over the construction management office area to the school district, and we turned that into the new construction management office, and that's been a really great reuse of that space. We're working right now in the meter shop. If you haven't been in there, just changing the windows made a huge difference in terms of air quality and heat and coolness in the, you know, the various times of the year. So we're just kind of working through that so that we can get more life out of those old buildings.
And you may not be able to address this now, but the question I really have, or the two questions are, one, just in the context of the first phase that we'd approved, I think a couple of years back, and I think what you were addressing, what is this really adding to that? But also, how is it going to impact the Logan livability efforts that we've been trying to push right there across street?
Yeah, and I think in general, anything we do to improve these facilities is a benefit to the neighborhood. We're getting greater, you know, soundproofing and those kinds of things to help with the neighborhood. We have put in the kids' murals on the Marietta side, which seems to improve that area. We are, you know, just trying to make sure that those buildings, we get rid of some of the dust. Obviously, the parking lot improvement there from the last few years helped with dust in the neighborhood. So as we go through these things, we're always thinking about how it's better for our operations, how it's better for our employees, and how it's better for our neighbors.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Cal.
While you're up here, I forgot to ask, for the lower terrace one, what's the reason for the request for the suspension of the rules to pass tonight, I guess?
Oh, yeah, it was just, we swapped versions. I think Elizabeth went through the fact that we had a better property, a cleaned up property description, so the legal description was more precise on the property description, and we added the file number. So we are just swapping the versions that we had available just for those technical reasons.
Just to follow up then, is there anything, if it were following normal process and delayed, would there be an issue?
We've preferred that we be voted on tonight. The developer has an outstanding contract bid for the work that they need to execute, and they can't do that until they have a vote from City Council.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to ordinance C36765. Christine Schisler.
Good afternoon, council. This ordinance is to update some of the SMCs as it relates to the Spokane Employees Retirement System. We've removed option A and B. They have been removed since the end of 20, or January of '23 is when the board put it into effect. There's just the delay in us getting here. They are covered in other options we have, so this doesn't impact the employees negatively. It just assists the staffing. Those two options took a lot of manual work in calculating those. The other one is relating to rehiring of retirees as temp seasonals. We're codifying an MOU that was put in place by Local 270 to limit the hours to 480 hours annually, and also because of IRS rules that I learned at a conference, we've extended the wait period from two weeks to six months. The IRS requires a true separation of service, and so those are those two major changes.
Any questions for Christine? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's all for Mr. Scott. We will turn it over to Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Council President. Council, we just have proposed changes to the amended, the agenda for tonight, nothing for the 13th, obviously, and nothing for the 20th. The first one for tonight's agenda relates to Resolution 2025-0077. It's amendment of the water and hydroelectric rules and regulations. There's a motion, request for a motion to amend it. This swapped out versions of the rule with an updated version.
I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Through a second? Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any notes? Attention, that is amended.
Thank you, council. The next item relates to Resolution 2025-0078. This is another public rule, but this is for wastewater management sites or installations. And this also was a swapping out of the document, the supporting document, and there's a request to amend the resolution to include the new handbook.
Does anybody know how big the handbook is, just out of curiosity? Okay, I'll entertain an amendment. So moved. It's a second.
Singing.
It's been moved in a second for the adoption of the public rules, all those for the installation of the handbook. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions, that is passed.
Thank you, council. Next item relates to Resolution 2025-0080, which would recognize the Hilliard Subarea Plan. The request is to defer this resolution for a final consideration on October 20th, 2025, not November, but October 20th.
October?
Council president?
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Also move the deferral.
For the October date?
October 20th.
Spencer, you comments before we go further?
Just here to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any questions on this item? Okay, there was a motion to move to October 2nd?
20.
20, October 20th, moved second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that is deferred till October?
Thank you, council. Next item relates to Resolution 2025-0082. This is the development agreement related to lower terrace Seven Mile area that Ms. Shadle and Ms. Feist spoke to earlier, and it's a request for a motion, a single motion, to suspend the council rules and amend it to put in the newer development agreement, and this would preserve the current timing for consideration tonight.
See a motion?
So moved.
It was moved, I didn't hear the second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, councilmember Kat Cart, speak to it.
The clarification is the motion to do all three steps as written?
Yes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that is approved, thank you.
Thank you, council. Next item relates to ordinance C36752. This is the ordinance that would create a public rule process. The amendment in the packet has been fashioned after a fair amount of internal review with legal and administration. I will promise that this will be the final amendment, but this is, there have been quite a few changes since you last saw it, so this would be a motion to amend it to include the latest version of the ordinance.
So moved.
To move second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that's great, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, council. The last item relates to a potential deferral of ordinance C36738. This would be the ordinance that would change our regular meeting dates from Mondays to something else. This ordinance currently is in the packet as a blank, it has no specified day. It would seem wise that we would defer this, and we're suggesting that a motion to defer first reading to October 20th, and final reading October 27th, and that'll allow time for amendments.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I would actually make a motion to defer until first reading of December 1st and final reading December 8th.
I'll second, but I don't have an opinion on it. Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I was just picking a date after the budget is done, I think. I don't even know if that's enough time, honestly, I think that there needs to be some more stakeholder engagement, so I figured that's a week or two after the budget, and if needed, it could be deferred again after that.
Yeah, councilwoman, councilmember Kat Cart, then councilmembers of home.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm assuming there's some level of, of understanding of what change is going to come, and I'm not aware of what that is, I haven't heard anything since we had this last discussion a month ago or a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not sure what that looks like. So for me, I would either say, let's just dispense with this right now, or let's indefinitely defer until there's something substantial that we can act on.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would say December 1st, like, you know, if you're wanting to do a bunch of community engagement and things like that, I think that's a really tough time in between Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's. And so, if you're wanting to do the stakeholder engagement, I would say probably sometime into January, I think would make the most sense, but...
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I think ideally, this would be handled as we update our rules, right, in committees, and I think that that would work in tandem, so I, I do like the January idea. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to amend it in January too, I just didn't want it to seem like we were not moving, doing stuff going forward. So, January 12th, not the first week of January?
Not the first, who knows what counts? Councilmember Kat Cart?
Does that suggest then that we're not going to touch rules until January? Is that what I'm hearing?
I thought we were having a retreat, aren't we?
I don't know.
We haven't got the retreat date, that is, that is correct, which would be in January, but the date has not been decided. But the rules are, you can be submitting your ideas for rule amendments and changes during this whole process, nothing is keeping us from doing that, which is what we discussed earlier today. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, historically, I believe we've adopted our rules in December or January.
Well, yeah, we've, sometimes we've had multiple touches too, and I'm just not sure what the, what the plan is, because I know there's a lot of possible...
Last year, we did it in December, so just before the break, so...
I felt like that was a bit much, last year.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
Pushing out to January, is there more interest for that? I'm happy to amend that. I can do February, the first one of February, after rules have been adopted, then that would be an ordinance probably, potentially after rules are adopted.
I'm open to that. Any, any appetite?
So, I'll, I'll make an amendment to change the date to February 2nd.
That would be in the form of a motion, since the motion, first motion was already declared, so...
Yeah, I move to amend, to change the date to February 2nd.
It's been a motion to amend and change the date till February 2nd of 2027, and second, councilmember Bingle?
I'll say, I still don't support the changing of a date, but if we are going to discuss it February or January, somewhere in there makes more sense for us to be discussing it, because it's a pretty, pretty significant change, and so I'll vote for that, that date, but do not support changing the date, okay?
Thank you for making your motion, your... All those in favor, for the amendment to change the date till February 2nd, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions, that is approved and moved to February 2nd.
Council president, were we voting on the amended motion?
Yes, we voted on the amended motion.
Now we need to pass.
Now vote on the motion. I was into that all that one-step thing.
Do you have to make a motion again? No.
No, we just have to vote.
I need, I need a motion in a second, do we have it there? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 First reading, yes, February 2nd.
First reading on the first.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fister. My third time, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions, one no, that's six to one, thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas as modified.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the agendas as modified, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? Thank you, we are in recess until 6:00 PM.